Closed session, but I believe that we'll be reconvening in closed session after this meeting for, we didn't get to finish all of our items. But so far, is there anything to report out, Martha?
No actions to report.
Okay, thank you. So again, I've called the meeting to order. Would you please call the roll, Kimmy?
Councilmember Ania?
Here.
Councilmember Schlong?
Here.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Gasno?
Here.
Mayor Holly?
Here. Thank you, we're all here. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal. Okay, our first item, items on our agenda have to do with acknowledgements, and we have some very fine acknowledgements tonight. The first one is acknowledgement of Town Resident Tyrone Batson for his ongoing community service and reduction of neighborhood blight. And I will ask Mr. Ania, please to introduce this item.
Thank you. Mayor HCD?
Yes.
I'd like to read the certificate of appreciation first. Where has Tyrone Batson has contributed to the well-being of fellow residents and the welfare of our citizens by giving tirelessly of his time and energy without desire for recognition? And where has he has provided his services to his elderly and impoverished neighbors without desire for any compensation? And where has he has for many years worked quietly, often on notice, by the general public? Now therefore, we do hereby declare our appreciation for the work that Mr. Tyrone Batson does in the cleanup of his neighborhood and surrounding area, signed this day on October 6, 2014, by Richard Holling, Mayor.
Thank you.
Would you like to come up?
I will say, I think I see Tyrone daily, and we catch up on the Giants and other things. But I knew the hard work that you do, and I wish we all contributed like you do. Thanks again, and thank you, Mr. Muldoon, for bringing this to our attention. Okay, Mr. Muldoon, did you want to say anything before we leave? Okay, very good. So move on to the next acknowledgement. And again, both you gentlemen are welcome to stay the whole evening, if you want. We're going to have a brief presentation by Anita Janis, I think it's going to be Anita Janis. Is Anita here? I didn't see her here. There was going to be a brief presentation by Anita from Harrington House regarding domestic violence in our community, issuance of a certificate of recognition of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So Councilmember Murray, would you mind reading this particular one?
This is a certificate of acknowledgement by the City of Crescent City, whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to systemic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. Whereas victims should have help to find the compassion, comfort, and healing they need, and domestic abusers should be punished to the fullest extent of the law. Whereas victims of violence should have access to medical and legal services, counseling, transitional housing, and other supportive services so that they can escape the cycle of abuse. And whereas Harrington House, a domestic violence emergency shelter serving our community, received 432 crisis calls in the year 2013, whereas Harrington House served a total of 372 unduplicated calls in 2013. Whereas Harrington House provides safe shelter, educational programming, and helps clients identify resources to make positive changes in their lives. Now therefore, I, Richard Holling, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, do hereby acknowledge October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, signed this day, October 6, 2014, Richard Holling, Mayor. And is there anyone here to accept this proclamation for Harrington House?
Okay, see, that's true. Mr. Ania, you are on the board, so we'll go ahead and give the proclamation to Mr. Councilmember Ania. And the reason I had Catherine read that is both Catherine Murray and myself, we were both involved with social services for a long time, and we worked closely with Harrington House.
And I've gone through the training, to do some training for Harrington House, so thank you.
Good, and we feel strongly about their services.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
Okay, thank you again, and we'll see that they get that. Now, the final acknowledgement for tonight is an acknowledgement of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints for their continued community service, including recent work at Tsunami Landing. Is there a representative from the church? Oh, very good. Hello, sir, thank you for being here. Would you like to read this?
Sure.
I'm going to go ahead and spread the wealth here. Kelly's going to read this acknowledgement.
This is a certificate of appreciation from the City of Crescent City, whereas the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints offers opportunities for community service, friendship, and development of unity and kinship. And whereas in 2014 alone, this organization has been a definite influence for good in our community by organizing and carrying out several projects within Crescent City. And whereas members of this organization on September 6th provided beautification to Tsunami Landing area, including weed pulling, brush trimming, and the staining of several benches. And whereas members of the organization on April 26th assisted in painting curbs and hydrants in the downtown area, as well as weeding the tree wells in the front street and kid town areas. And whereas members of the organization on February 22nd volunteered in the removal of graffiti, the placement of wood chips, and the minor repair of playground structures. Now therefore, I deem it an honor and pleasure to extend this certificate of appreciation to the congregation at our Crescent City Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and we ask our community to join us in recognizing the many contributions made by their efforts, signed this day, October 6, 2014, by Mayor Holling.
Thank you. And we have Mr. Mason here, I didn't introduce you before.
That's right.
Thank you for coming to the podium. Did you have anything you'd like to say?
I just wanted to say that Bishop asked me to come down, because he had to work at classes and whatnot. But it was both the First and Second Awards participated in those projects, and it's a main tenet of the Church that it's not enough that a person do know wrong, but every person should be anxiously engaged in a good cause to aid and assist their community. And thank you for the acknowledgement.
Thank you, sir. And it's appropriate that you be here to receive this, given all that you do relative to blight and making the community better. So thank you, and I'll go ahead and give this to you.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, Mayor, we wanted to just...
Staff are just real appreciative of the community effort and support that we do receive on this, and we thought it would be nice to show some of the efforts that we make.
You can't hear me, Mr. Platsa. You can't hear me.
Mr. Platsa was just saying that how appreciative we are of this community service group, and how much they really have helped us out. You know, when Danny Fry first approached me with...
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Schlong?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Gasno?
Yes.
Mayor Holly?
Yes, thank you. So move on to reports and presentations, and we have none. The next item is called the Public Comment Period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the Council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for the appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are at the microphone, or not at their microphone, excuse me, are out of order and will not be a part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment this evening? Yes, ma'am?
Angela Glora is representing Del Norte County.
Angela, can we wait just a second? Is the microphone not working?
Sorry.
Don't worry, you're three minutes...
Okay.
Oh, that's much better, thank you.
Okay, great. Do you need me to repeat?
Why don't you, in case some of the people in the audience didn't hear?
Okay, my name's Angela Glora, I live in Del Norte County, and I'm here representing the Community Food Council for Del Norte County and the adjacent tribal lands, and I have a written statement, so I don't forget it. So thanks to the recent recession, record numbers of Americans live with food insecurity, which means that they sometimes don't know where their next meal is coming from. One in seven Americans receives Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, benefits from the federal government. In California, SNAP is called CalFresh. Over 5,200 Del Norte residents rely on CalFresh benefits to purchase food for themselves and their families. Benefits average just $5 per person per day, and although CalFresh is supposed to provide a supplemental food budget, many families depend on the benefits for all their food needs. Many residents of the City of Crescent City, your constituents, face food insecurity. Many of them use CalFresh benefits. Many of them are children. In fact, 70% of CalFresh households include children under the age of 18. Could you do what they do? Could you eat a well-balanced diet on $5 a day? October 24th is the Fourth National Food Day. The Community Food Council for Del Norte County and the adjacent tribal lands is focusing on hunger as our food day theme. Nationally, the broader theme is food justice. From October 20th to the 24th, we are doing a CalFresh challenge, and we invite you to join us. For five days, walk in the shoes of a CalFresh client, spend no more than $5 each day on all of your food and beverages, and that means those lattes and glasses of wine. Learn about the challenges many of your constituents face every single day, not just for five days. Across the country, many elected officials have taken a similar challenge, living for a few days or a few weeks on the same food budget as many of their constituents, and we hope that you will join them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. What is the date of that?
It's the 20th through the 24th.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other public comment?
Hello, Jody Hoon, I'm the Victim Services Coordinator for the Uroch Tribe Domestic Violence Sexual Assault Program, and I live in the county. So I wanted to thank the City Council for our leadership for acknowledging October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I wanted to take public comment time to acknowledge how important it is that we work together within our communities, with other agencies, non-tribal and tribal. I also want to acknowledge several of our tribally affiliated DB programs in the Del Norte County Crescent City area, NAR, Uroch Tribe Domestic Violence Sexual Assault Program, which has been around since 2002, Smith River Ranteria DVSA program, I believe they've been around since 2010, Intertribal Council of California, who has a longstanding of 30 years, worked a long time in our community, as well as Northern California Tribal Court Coalition, who has provided indirect legal advocacy services for domestic violence victims since 2010. Uroch Tribe Domestic Violence Sexual Assault Program last year provided services to 120 unduplicated adults and children. We provided 16 Uroch cultural activities promoting healing and healthy relationships. We provided 71 domestic violence-related trainings to about 750 participants. Our domestic violence sexual program offers a full range of services to Uroch people and their families that have experienced domestic violence. These services include emergency supplies, emergency shelter and relocation resources, legal assistance through tribal court from an attorney at law, clinical therapy, individual and group peer counseling, as well as domestic violence, as well as we have a domestic violence investigator that works directly with our program through Uroch Public Safety. So I thank you, it's very important.
Okay, thank you for updating us, I appreciate that. Okay, other public comment?
Turn that off.
Did you get a phone call?
Yeah.
Okay, good timing.
Sorry. Hi, my name's Tracy Fensler, I live in the county, and I'm on the bid board, and I just wanted to let the board know that the Wednesday market now takes EBT. So we've got it all fixed, and it's all working now, so we should be live next week.
Very good, thank you. Good news. Any other public comment this evening? Don't be shy.
Hi, I'm Jessica Shiflett, and I'm not dressed for this at all, nor did I prepare to do this. I'm a CRR, or College of the Redwood student, and I'm currently taking political science, which has brought me to this meeting, and my goal in the end is to be a district attorney, and I'm just two semesters short from finishing my AA in social behavioral sciences. I'm going to move on and complete an undergrad, and then sit for my bar, and I'm very, very excited, and I'm so motivated to make a difference. And I just wanted to come up here and speak for a minute, because not only do I feel like it would help my report, but I feel very motivated by a lot of things going on in this community. I'm from LA, so there is not much like this. Though we have district meetings and community meetings, many people don't attend, many people aren't motivated, and it's hard to even find people to sit on our board. I'm a single mother of two children, and I do participate in the SNAP benefits, and I found a huge, huge inspiration from what she was saying with between October 20th and the 24th, there having something to sit. And imagine your struggle, because I used to work for a law firm, which is what put me into school, and I never imagined the struggle. And I feel very motivated to make a difference in the City Council, and I wanted to say that not only do I appreciate what was done by the church at our playgrounds, because my daughters play on them at Kidtown as well, but I'm very, very motivated by how I see the town show up, and, you know, to see Mr. Tyrone in here and making a difference is so beautiful. And I think I want to definitely try and be here a lot more, but I really wanted to at least vocalize my support for the SNAP, you know, and community change, because it takes all of us to help society benefit. It takes a village to raise a child, and so I'm very excited, and I just wanted to thank you guys and vocalize my support, so thank you.
Thank you for coming to the podium, appreciate it. We look forward to seeing you more, if we can.
I think you have a bright future.
Very good. So, other public comments? Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on. Again, thank you all for your comments. Under public hearings, I don't believe we have any this evening. So continuing business. Number nine, it's Fred Endert Municipal Swimming Pool Accessibility and Building Project, Building Improvement Project. A, the action may be to reject all bids for the Fred Endert Municipal Swimming Pool Accessibility and Building Improvement Project, and B, to authorize staff to amend the plans and specifications and re-advertise for bids on two separate projects, one for the re-roof and the skylight retrofit, and the other for the exterior accessibility improvements. Mr. Platsa? Mayor Holly, I'll have Mr. Weir present this item. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor Holly, members of the council. Yes, we are back in front of you in regard to the Fred Endert Municipal Pool Project. It's a CDBG-funded project through program income. On August 18th, the council authorized us to go out for bids on our project, which included a re-roofing of the pool, new skylights, new accessible doors on the east side, and then accessible pathways. Put the project out to bid, on September 30th, we received three bids, two from out-of-town contractors, one local. The lowest bid was deemed unresponsive because they did not have a bid bond, and the other two were far above our budget. We were expecting the project to come in somewhere around $130,000. The lowest bid that we had was $184,000, and that was from Adams Commercial General Contracting. Danco Builders also put in a valid bid, and they were at 205. So the bids were a lot higher than what we had expected.
So you're saying our local contractor didn't have a bond?
Correct. Correct. So in looking at the project and talking with some of the potential contractors, and in particular, the different trades that it involved, it was kind of an unusual project in which you had a roofing project with skylights, as well as you had a concrete minor flatwork project. So when we looked at this, and we looked at some of the bids and whatnot, you're almost dealing with a general contractor that was marking up a couple of subs to do the work. So if we put the project out to bid, we think we can, one, get more local contractors that should have a more reasonable bid, as well as keeping them within their specialty so they don't have to mark up just another subcontract. So that's our strategy at this point. We think we can complete a very similar scope of work. We're going to put the project out, if the council authorizes, on two different projects, the re-roof and skylights as originally bid, and then we'll break up the concrete portion one more time, just to make sure that we do have a project that will fit this funding amount, and we'll get it completed in the shortest amount of time.
Thank you. Are there any technical questions of Mr. Weir? Okay, seeing none, is there any public comment on this matter? Okay, there is no public comment, so we'll bring this back to the City Council. Anyone want to begin?
What is our action on this? Is this direction, or do we need to do a resolution or a vote?
No, we need to...
Yeah.
Yeah, two actions, and one is to reject all bids, and the second one is authorize staff to amend the plans, specifications, and rebid. I think we need to take two separate, can we do all in one motion?
We can do them separate.
Let's go ahead and do them separate tonight, then. I'll entertain a motion for the first...
I'll move to reject all bids for the Fred Endert Municipal Swimming Pool Accessibility and Building Improvement Project.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to reject the bids. Any further discussion? Okay, would you please pull the vote, Kim?
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Schlong?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Gasno?
Yes.
Mayor Holly?
Yes, thank you.
And I will move to authorize staff to amend the plans and specs and re-advertise for bids on two separate projects, one for the re-roof and skylight retrofit, and the other for the exterior accessibility improvements.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend the plans and specification as stated. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing no other discussion, would you please pull the vote on that?
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Schlong?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Gasno?
Yes.
Mayor Holly?
Yes.
I had one quick question. So these funds need to be expended. Can you remind me the deadline for these funds? I mean, I guess I'm asking, is this going to cause a problem with the funding? You're all looking at each other?
Yeah, with HCD these days, it's hard to answer that question.
Well, I thought that we had to have it expended by, we had a deadline, right?
Well, we were trying to get these expended by the...
Isn't that like the first quarter of next year?
By the end of this year, the end of December, but I think our deadline is March 31st. And, you know, we can discuss that a little bit more in the next agenda item on our funding cycle, but we're trying to get this done by the end of...
You can get it done?
Yes.
Okay.
By March 31st, and really, the answer to that is, the sooner the better. You know, we get it done, then it has other applications.
And a lot of this...
Spend that money.
Right. And a lot of this construction now is going to be weather-dependent, you know, we're going to need about a week, you know, with the roof, and you need, you know, no rain or no heavy rain for the concrete.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we'll go ahead and move on to the next item. Under New Business, number 10, receive Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Status Report, authorize staff to advance payments to the sub-receipients of the 10-EDEF-7253 and 12-CDBG-8380 Grants, pending expenditure of program income funds, and the City's ability to request funds reimbursement from the grants. That's a lot, kind of a run-on sentence.
And I'm going to have Ms. Boyd explain all that to the City Council.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Boyd.
May I ask something? Does any of this have to do with RHS?
Yes, it does.
Then I'll have to excuse myself. I sit on the board.
Thank you, Mr. Ania. He's excused himself due to a possible conflict? Any other conflict? Okay, great.
I know you don't work there any longer, but is there a kind of statute, not statute, but a time, from the time that he worked there, that he has to recuse himself?
Let me talk about Mayor Pro Tim Gasno?
No.
Okay.
Very good. You don't have anything left in the drawers over there, or anything? Okay, okay, go ahead, LA, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, and we've been talking with you for the last two, three months about how HCD Sacramento has changed their rules regarding the use of program income, and as that program income that Mr. Weir is using on the pool project, one of the changes was that we have to expend our program income before we can request any more grant reimbursements under our 2010 and 2012 grants. So that kind of puts us in a little bit of a cash flow bind. The total amount that we need to expend of the pool project is 161,500, and between the roof and the concrete and the equipment purchases for the pool, we'll be able to expend that money. And ideally, it's the sooner the better, because what I'm going to be asking you next is to advance funds to the sub-receipients of those grants so that they can continue doing business while we are getting our pool project done, our program income spent, and then we can go to the CDBG and ask them for reimbursement. Part of the rule change is that we cannot ask for any funds reimbursements on the 2010 or 2012 grant until we have shown to HCD that we have expended our program income, and we won't be able to do that until we finish the project. They have told us that we cannot write any checks to the sub-receipients of those grants from our CDBG funds, that if we want to continue paying them in the meantime, we have to write those checks from our general fund. So the purpose of this report tonight is to bring you up to speed on what that means, what those payment amounts would be, and to ask you to authorize staff to advance those monies on a temporary basis from the general fund. We expect that as soon as the pool project is done, as soon as we have expended that money, we can submit our funds reimbursement requests, and typically, we get reimbursed in a really timely manner from HCD. So once we have the pool project done and we get these reimbursement requests, I'm estimating maybe the general fund will have advanced money for approximately six months. The amounts of the advances are, under the 2010 grant, to the North Coast SBDC, approximately 121,000. We need to pay the retention on the Second Street Sewer Project to Mercer Frasier, that's 61,000, and to RHS, I'm estimating that Harrington House and the Food Bank will each need approximately 60,000. And then we have an obligation to pay Lori Adams of the Adams Ashby Group, who is our grant manager, roughly 30,000. These are estimates. We estimated them a little bit high, just to make sure that we had sufficient approval to write these checks. So that is what we are asking if you will approve and authorize this evening.
Well, I have a huge problem with this. It makes no sense to me whatsoever, and we don't have that money to give them.
Well, we would be advancing it out of the general fund reserve, and we would anticipate reimbursement from HCD within six months.
You have a guarantee of that?
It's all dependent on getting the pool project done.
And why so much? Why 121,000 SBDC?
Well, I believe, let me run through the numbers with you, they're in the staff report. They're in the staff report. Uh, let me get to the right page. Um, this is the months of June, July, and August, September, October, November, and December. They, and their June bill was twelve thousand, six, ten. The July bill was twelve thousand, four hundred and seventy. The August bill was fourteen thousand, seven, fifty-nine. Um, we, as I said, we're estimating high of approximately twenty thousand a month for the remaining four months, September through December. That brings us to that total.
And Emily, this, this was the money that was granted to them through the CDBG?
That's correct. We have-
So, all of this, uh, that you want us to advance, it's already been promised to these entities-
Correct.
But because we can't spend the money now, and they will not reimburse us, or give us extra money, or give us an expayment on the CDBG, we have to do it out of our funds?
That's essentially correct, yes.
Yeah, Mayor, two comments on that. With the SBDC, I, I believe their, uh, grant expires at the end of, uh, this year, December 31st.
Correct.
So they need to do the work and perform, and, you know, do that expenditure by the end of the year. And, and two, you know, you know, the reason we have a general fund reserve is, for instance, is like this. Now, it's a policy decision, you know, for the council, and that's why we're here tonight to talk about this, and is this, you know, something that, you know, we want, you know, to advance. Um, you know, we have certain partnerships with these organizations, um, and as they're our sub-receipients, and we're, you know, receiving these grants, you know, our, our hands are pretty tied by the state at this point, you know, with their changing regulations.
Thank you.
Uh, for me, the SBDC is a critical component to economic development with the, um, flight trainings that they do for small businesses, and, um, that, that they really help, um, they're a, part of the economic engine for the community, and, and, and it's an awkward position that the city's being put in. It's not a good position that, that we've been thrown into, but I think that this is probably the most creative solution that, that, um, we, we, I applaud the, the staff for coming up with a solution to the dilemma that we've been put into with the yet ever-changing, um, requirements that the CDBG's thrown us into. So, I, I think that this is a, a good solution for, um, for us to help keep the, um, agencies going.
Okay, are there other questions or comments?
I was just gonna say, I, I believe in every one of these agencies. Um, we've been funding them for a long time, and, and they have, um, a big impact on our community, but this is, you're talking about three hundred, over three hundred thousand dollars out of our reserve, and I'm very uncomfortable with that. So I, I, I guess you, I just, you're not, you're not giving many, me any warm fuzzies about that we're gonna get that back, because that is a third, or more than a third, of our general fund, which is for emergencies, basically, for the city.
Yes, I completely understand what you're saying. When I actually got the numbers tallied, I, I had a bit of a shock myself, but the fact is that we have, just as we have contracts with the sub-receipients, we also have a contract with CDBG, and they will have to pay these monies. However, because of the rules, the new rules on the program income, they haven't said they won't pay this. What they've said is they won't pay it until we have expended the program income. So in the meantime, our sub-receipients are still needing to do, do business and operate, and, um, I, we actually approached, um, Don Yetsey at RHS and asked him if they could hold off for six months, and he went to their board, and they really don't have another funding source to cover what we typically give them. Um, so the only assurance I can give you is that, um, we do have a contract with CDBG for these grants, and they will have to pay them.
Right.
It's a matter of when they will choose to pay it.
Right.
So we're really talking about a cash flow issue, and I totally agree that it's a, it's a huge dollar amount. What typically happens is we turn that around very quickly, you know, um, every month, we're getting reimbursements, so we typically don't run into this kind of cash flow issue.
Yeah, I, I've just become very, uh, uncomfortable with CDBG in the last year, and the, and the way that they're operating, and there's a trust level anymore with, you know, whether or not we have a contract or not, doesn't necessarily, uh, anyway, um-
Can I, can I ask, what is, what's the condition of our reserve? Are we in a-
We have like nine-
About a million dollars.
Nine hundred thousand, or-
It, it's roughly a million dollars.
Roughly a million, and, and we committed, uh, about a hundred thousand dollars at the last meeting towards the RV park, um, if that's needed, so we're about four hundred thousand.
It's about a third of our, or it's more than a third.
And the thing to remember as well is that both of those, the CDBG and the prior line of credit to the RV park, those are all as needed. We're not gonna start writing checks out of the general fund to the CDBC sub-receipients tomorrow.
Right.
Yeah, they're gonna be submitting, and it's over the course of the next six months as they incur the cost and ask us to pay them, so.
It really causes great concern for these organizations that, you know, should CDBG money go away, which is highly likely, that, you know, we're gonna have to turn to them and say, "We can't fund you any longer," and it, it, it makes me very sad that it, they have no money to operate without these grants. So, uh, you know, I strongly encourage the city to work with these, um, groups, to start doing some sustainability, um, planning. Otherwise, they're not gonna be, you know, in existence, because I, I see the CDBG funding going away.
I'm sorry, and, and where are you getting that from? The CDBG going away?
Just the, just the environment, the environment, the, the struggles that they've been having, you know, the funding, the, the political environment, all of that.
Well, the fact that the county didn't get it just last year.
Yeah.
This, the county didn't get their, uh, current application approved.
But that doesn't mean that CDBG's going away. It means that one agency didn't, one organization didn't get it.
Still, it's, it's a grant, it, you know, these agencies need to, to work on a plan, um, because I would hate to see any of them be affected so much by losing these dollars that they couldn't do business.
Well, I think getting back to our current situation is that we're trying to make sure that these agencies can continue to do their great work in the community by using our reserves as a cash flow, and I, we got to make a decision on that.
Right, I agree. It's just a big risk.
It is a big risk.
But this is money that we've already basically awarded them, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's not something-
They're our sub-receipients.
Yeah, they've already been awarded this money by-
Yeah, we understand that.
It's not, that's something that they are applying for and hoping to get. This is something they've already been awarded.
Correct. Well, and I need clarification, too. This is, this is reimbursing them for services they've already provided. They're, they're billing us after they've provided the services.
Yeah, the way the process works, and Emily, correct me if I'm wrong here, is, is, you know, their sub-receipients, the, the city applied for the grant applications, you know, working with them on their needs. We were awarded the money by HCD, then, you know, they implement the grant, the funds, they spend the money, they submit to the city their, uh, request for reimbursement based on, you know, the work that they performed. We in turn send that to HCD, receive the money from HCD, and then we, you know, send them, you know, the dollars. So it's kind of, you know, we're kind of a, a pass-through, you know, with these grants.
Okay, I just-
Yeah, and, 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 I mean, they're right, the dollars are committed to them, it's just that using that much-
And overall, we're responsible for the performance of the grants. You know, we're, we're, we're in these contracts with the sub-receipients, saying, you know, this is what, you know, the grant's for, this is, you know, what they're gonna perform, and that's why we get into the, the monet trade and, and, you know, the performance. Uh, but the cash flow is back and forth, so at this point, we're not receiving, uh, the cash flow from HCD until we spend the program income.
Yeah. When did we, when did we learn that we, they were not going to pay us until we expended our sub-rece, our, uh, program income funds?
Yeah, we just learned this, and once we learn, and it's gonna be evolving here a couple of weeks, yeah, August, okay. Probably about August that we've been trying to, you know, figure out, you know, the timing of this, and, you know, at this point, this is, you know, HCD came out with a lot of changes, you know, back in August-
Correct.
-and trying to figure out these, what these changes are, um, and at this point, this is the only, you know, solution that we can come up with to keep the, the project going.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment on this matter?
Tim Hoon, uh, county resident. Uh, yeah, it's a interesting dilemma. It just occurred to me, um, what if you spent the program income on something else right now, like, uh, maybe there's something in the general fund that you could spend program income on, and then later, uh, you know, get reimbursed for that? Uh, anyway, just, you know, I know you wanna spend it on those projects, or alternatively, if, if you could put out those bids and then, um, really like prepay the contractor, you know, is a great idea, and red sky, and, I mean, um, roofing and, uh, concrete separate, and then just write a check, you know, and, and say, "Well, you know, come back and check in the work."
Get that we trust you? Get the work?
Yeah, I mean, you know, hopefully Eric will get, you know, a, a good local contractor, you know, that, you know, they're not going anywhere, and they wanna come and work for the city again, you know, they're, but just to expedite the, instead of waiting for the work to be done, et cetera, and then sign, you know, but, uh, just in the interest of lowering the risk, the, the sooner you spend that program income.
Okay.
Anyway.
Thank you, those are some ideas.
Another alternative.
Appreciate it.
Program income funds have to be spent on specific, um, eligible projects. We can't just expend it on something out of the general fund, but sure Emily would if she could.
Okay, thank you. Any other public, or public comment on this particular matter? We're talking about the community development block grant and how we're gonna deal with the shortfall. Okay, seeing no other public comment, I guess it's up to us to figure out what we wanna do.
So, um-
How do you feel about it?
I, uh, right, I'm, I'm used to not talking sometimes on these things. I, I think it's necessary, I think it is what a reserve's for, but I would hope that we expedite this as much as we possibly can, so that, so that the period of time that we don't have these funds, 'cause if, you know, we've talked about the reserve, and if, if last, last chance grade falls into the ocean, how are we gonna survive for two or three months? This puts us three hundred thousand dollars closer to default. So, uh, that, that's, it's a calculated risk, but I've also directed a nonprofit before, and I know how difficult it is, 'cause they're dealing with, with pennies trying to make things work, and, and this would be real, real difficult for them to function without being reimbursed for the programs that they've already administered. So I think I, I'm going to be in favor of it if there's a, if it comes before us.
And they will be billing us, it's not like we're gonna just cut a check for the whole amount, so, uh, with that, I, I will, um, make a motion to authorize the city manager to advance payments as needed under 10E, 10-dash-EDEF-dash-7253 and 12-dash-CDBG-dash-8380, the community development block grant, CDBG, pending expenditure of program income funds, and the city's ability to request funds reimbursement from the grants, um, using our, um, reserve funds. Is that enough of a motion?
I will second that.
Okay.
Okay, it's movement seconded to go ahead and approve this item, and that is to, uh, use our reserve to, uh, to pay forward, uh, the obligations to the sub-receipients, and hopefully get that reserve returned to us in a timely way. Is that another way to say it? Okay, so, uh, any other discussion? It's, okay. Uh, Kimmy, would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Schlong?
No.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Gassno?
Yes.
Mayor Holly?
Yes. Okay, thank you. And we'll go ahead and get Mr. Ania.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. Here he is.
Yeah, that's right. I know, I'm not-
Oh, I'd forgotten that, okay. So, we'll move on to number 11. This is to consider a request from the downtown business district, improvement district, to place eight 11-inch by 17-inch business crime deterrent signs on city property at various locations in downtown Crescent City.
I will have to recuse myself, because I have designed all of the signs, pro bono for the business improvement district.
Okay, thank you. Did anyone else design any signs? No? Okay.
Unless you wanna skip that.
Okay, Mr. Flotson. Mr. Taylor, present this item? Mr. Taylor?
Um, a few months back, uh, we had representatives contacted city staff about, um, their desire to put up about approximately eight, uh, business watch signs within various locations within downtown district. Um, typically, we would handle kind of review of signs, and permitting of signs through assigned permit process and architectural review process, however, in this case, uh, all the property is public property owned by the city, so therefore, um, it needed to come forward with a request to the city council for permission, one, for, first of all, for the use of the properties opposed to signs. Um, so I was gonna give a brief, kinda just, brief history here. Um, I attended a couple of bid meetings, um, last of which, several businesses had, uh, submitted comments, um, several letters from different businesses about criminal activity, and kind of their frustration with the crime that's been occurring downtown. Um, and again, Chief Barry helped put together some crime statistics, and you all received that little, uh, kind of printout of the different crime stats over the past few years. And it, looking at this, you know, it's, you know, crime's not, uh, I wouldn't say it's not rampant downtown, I mean, there's certainly some incidents downtown. See a lot, majority of the, a lot of them were kind of alarm calls and, uh, different instances, not to say that criminal activity's not occurring, so, and obviously, the businesses wanna protect their downtown, and they protect their businesses. So they proposed, uh, and they've been working, I believe, with the police department on creating a downtown business watch program. Uh, and so the program includes, uh, obviously, one place in the signage, signage, the 11-by-17 signs within the public parking areas. Uh, also, they'd be placing them, and each business would get their own sign they could place. Um, two, I believe it has, also includes a phone tree, and I'm sure they can tell you about this a little better than I can. And three, kind of regular, uh, law enforcement, meetings with local law enforcement and police department. Again, in, uh, considering signage, we have to look at the zoning code and also our general plan. Um, so I have, in the analysis section, I've given you kind of what the, the signage section of our zoning code states, and what the general plan also states, and zoning code refers back to the general plan. And, and it, in essence, really, what it's for is to, you know, keep up the, the aesthetics of the town. Um, really, we should be working towards creating some type of an architectural standard for, for post-signage, uh, within the downtown and around the city in general. Um, so one thing that we had proposed, uh, back to bid was, we would like to incorporate kind of the city's logo, that was accepted a few years back by the planning commission, and I go, I put a brief PowerPoint presentation together. Um, just real quickly, a smart, uh, things would be, would be worked out about the signage also, would be who's gonna, you know, post the signs, who's gonna maintain the signage, and we'll, we can get to that in a little bit. So, first slide is the proposed sign, I'm sorry, they're a little distorted, 'cause they're 11-by-17 signs. Um, this, the signs proposed by bid, they'd like to put, uh, probably shows, uh, tells you about the suspicious activities, the downtown area. Um, I believe this is like a nationally-recognized, um, symbol for this business watch program. Um, obviously, a couple of concerns, one would, would be the sign clutter, how many signs are going downtown? Um, also, there's been some concerns raised about the type of message that it might be sending for our downtown area, is it kind of a negative message? Um, you know, the other argument is, well, it's kind of a internationally-recognized symbol, so people kind of- You know, the other argument is, well, it's kind of an internationally recognized symbol, so people kind of should be used to that symbol. So, I included a few other, and they're not the greatest pictures. There's just a few other examples of different neighborhood and watch signs, kind of business type signs. So, there's a variety out there that different communities use. And again, as Mr. Gasno alluded to, he helped create this one. And this kind of has our city logo and kind of the branding that we're moving towards. You know, it's obviously used again a lot of our wayfinding signage. We're hoping we can incorporate kind of a welcome to downtown sign and also get, we want to get their message across. I mean, obviously, there's some concerns there, valid concerns about protecting their businesses. And again, this is kind of an aerial photograph. This blue line represents the bid district. As you can see, it kind of extends from G Street over to L Street between Front and Fifth Street. Just giving a quick number, I just had a printout of the bid businesses. I believe there's about 96 addresses within the business district, approximate. And again, the red dots represent the locations. They're probably not exact locations. They're just representative of kind of the requested areas. And you can see they mostly just include all the public parking lots downtown as well as the, you know, fountain area, plaza area down in there. And of course, like I said, we're a little concerned with the slot, sign clutter because if you're talking about, you know, each business, we don't regulate the window signage. So, every business is free to put whatever signs they like in their windows. Again, let's go back to the proposed signage. So, we're just trying to present kind of the information, what our zoning code requires, our general plan requires. And then we have, really, the way we see it, there's a few options open to the council and I'll do those briefly. Uh, one, you could move to approve the installation of the signage at the requested locations and have the architectural review committee approve the final design, which means you would approve the use of city property, but then request that the architectural review committee, back to the planning commission, would give the final approval for the sign type that would go up. Uh, and then also direct staff to come back to council with the signed maintenance agreement. Obviously, ongoing costs associated with maintaining signs is always a concern of ours. Uh, two, move to approve the signed design and installation requested locations and then direct staff to come back with the maintenance agreement. So, again, you just approved the requested sign and the use of city property. Or three, you could just move to deny the request altogether.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions, Mr. Taylor?
So, am I right in assuming that they want to do this sign, the big black and white and red sign? And Mr. Gasno designed the nice, the nice lighthouse looking one?
Correct.
Okay, and they do not want that sign?
That's my understanding, yes. They'd like to have the kind of recognized sign.
All right, thanks.
I don't know why. I was under the impression that Mr. Gasno designed both signs. Yes. I don't know what difference that makes, but, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so I'll ask for public comment on this. Any public comment?
Cheryl Corpstein, current president of the bid board. And the board is asking the council to approve the red sign that we showed you this evening. We appreciate Mr. Gasno and staff's efforts and concerns. We did an informal poll on Facebook as well as walking around the district and with folks that we came in contact with. No one has been offended or put off by the sign. They didn't feel on Facebook that it would keep them from shopping downtown. It is an internationally recognized symbol. They know what it means. If you're the bad guys, you're gonna watch out. If you're not, you're not too concerned with it. But it is, um, it is a short, sweet message because it is that. This is the proposed size of the signs that will be going in business windows. They won't all be 11-by-17 signs. They'll be this size. Some of them have already started going up around the district. Sherry Johnston has one in her window. Glamour Manor, Mel and Matt Keim from Custom Designs feel so strongly about this program that they actually printed these for free for the bid and they have been a big opponent of the bid in the past. So, we really feel this is a, um, this is something that is gonna pull us all together. And so, we are hoping that the city will support us in that effort. I did get the 74-page report that Mr. Palazzo forwarded. You may have seen that in the emails. And in reading it, one of the things that it stressed most was that effectively designed signs have to be, have good visibility, good readability and good conspicuity, which means they need to be conspicuous. Our concern is, while the whole board has not seen that blue sign, so we've never voted on it, we have voted to approve this sign. They blend in. They're a nice design. They match our street signs. They could blend in with our tsunami evacuation route zones, creating confusion and basically lowering the effectiveness of both programs. So, again, we are asking for you to approve this sign tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Cheryl, don't go away.
I, I think we might have a couple of questions before you.
Okay.
Can you, can you bring that one up here, the little one? Does it have the downtown on the bottom? Okay, I didn't know if it had like the, looks like downtown on the, on the bottom part of it, so thanks.
Cheryl, when you, thank you. When you talk about a program, what is the program beyond putting up signs?
Um, at this time, we have a public meeting planned for next week in the morning and in the evening. We are forming a grassroots business watch, which is very similar to a neighborhood watch. We have created a phone tree. You would initially contact the two key locations. We would then reach out and everyone in the district would call each other. We've kind of separated it out so that if it's a strictly retail issue, there's a shoplifter in the neighborhood, there's something, those people would notify each other. In the event of something like a bank robbery, again, we could reach out, notify businesses so that everyone could be on the lookout and we could partner, be eyes and ears for the police on the street as well as just, you know, be responsible for our own safety. I understand there isn't a huge crime wave downtown in terms, if you lived in Oakland, but for Crescent City, it's a crime wave. Unfortunately for Chief Barry, the morning of our bid meeting, we had a homeless man who took a residence in the alley and turned our power off to our entire building, frightening Irene of Beauty Secrets when she came into the office. So, you know, we do have issues and just some of this visibility would help the members of the downtown feel more proactive, feel like they were taking charge of their personal safety as opposed to just feeling that they need to sit back and wait for something to happen. As we did our research, we found that Medford uses the same logo. Arcata uses that same, his name is Boris the Burglar. And they use that logo. Eureka's using that logo. So, it is a very consistent message to folks when they see it. And even at our initial meeting, when we were all trying to describe him, we couldn't picture him exactly, but we all knew if we saw that sign, it meant that there's a neighborhood watch here. People in this neighborhood are aware. We're taking responsibility and we're gonna take care of each other.
And what's, what's the guy's name again?
Boris the Burglar.
Boris, okay.
Boris.
And, and you talked to the merchants downtown and they liked it?
Yep, everybody that's been around has liked it.
Mr. Anea?
The, but what about training? In my days at the police department, I taught neighborhood watch and business watch. It only works if people are trained.
That's what we're starting with the meetings on the 14th. We will be having quarterly meetings with law enforcement. We will be handing out, we're gonna order the handbooks from the National Institute of, whatever it is, it's in your letter. We'll be ordering their handbooks. Participants will get the phone tree. As I said the other day, when we were walking around just kind of handing out the stickers, people were very responsive and a lot of folks have had break-ins that they haven't even reported because they, they know that we live in a small area, police, um, we have adequate protection, but they are small in number and they are busy sometimes. So, some people just feel like they don't report things. So, um, they were in favor of doing this and watching each other.
You know, the, uh, the one sign there with the burglar is not, is not the only international sign.
No, it's not.
In fact, that's the one, the one a lot of people use are the neighborhood watch crime scene, the blue with the I.
Yeah.
Because it gives you a more, that they're watching. So, it's not the only one. There's others that you could do. You know, the one with the Crescent City one, those are going in parking lots. I don't think that'll get confused with tsunami unless they're going on the street, but they're going in parking lots. Is that right?
Well, at this time, the bid is requesting that we would buy eight of the red signs and that you would allow us to have them installed in the public parking lots. We would be responsible for replacing them if they were vandalized and we would probably fund the hours that were needed to put them up. We have not discussed the blue sign. I don't know that we would ask the city to partner with us on that. We might just go with the window signs and as we've been instructed from the signs, we could just let building owners put up some of the 11-17 signs on privately owned buildings instead. So, it's really the city's call.
And not everyone is in favor of it. Couple of businesses called me and said they are in favor of a sign, but not that particular sign.
Where did they see a different sign?
They have seen the other signs, the other sign other than this.
Oh, okay.
But they're, not everyone, it's not unanimous, but it's good to have those signs.
Of, of the people who've attended our meetings, Chief Barry and Eric Brett are meeting. Everyone at the meeting was in favor of them and we have not been given an indication by anyone. Again, if you put all of us in a room with a box of crayons, it's probably not the sign we would have designed, but it's a good sign and it is recognizable.
Okay, I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Other public comment? Again, your name and city or county residency, please.
My name is Jessica Schiflett and I'm now a resident of Delnort County. Um, I wanted to apologize for my down dress again for lack of preparation. And please excuse my ignorance as I'm still adjusting this process, but I had a few questions in regards to these signs. Are, are we guaranteeing enforcement of this if we're placing these signs deterring crime? Is there a set, because we have neighborhood watch and you say a group of your neighbors would get together to watch the neighborhood. Is there a business watch that's been picked out? Or is there a group that's gonna enforce these signs in this area? I guess is my first question.
That, well, the bid district are the ones that have the business, you know, that's where the businesses come together. But if they don't attend the meetings and learn about how to call and stuff, no, it's a sign deterrent only.
Okay, and so, using the sign deterrent, I'm not sure if the city's being asked to fund this. From what it sounds like, it's not.
No, no.
So, has there been maybe a projected, in, a beneficial gain from this? Like, I'm not sure because I'm not aware of what the business district is losing due to crime. Is, with these signs, has there been a projected, you know, increase or advantage, a projected gain? Like, an actual maybe something that's suggesting that crime would be deterred from these signs?
Yeah, nothing has been provided to us tonight, but, but we do have crime statistics that we've been looking at.
Okay.
And so, I guess the benefit would be, uh, people would feel safer being downtown.
And so, it'd be business owners that would be standing around and watching?
It's like taking a second thought if you're going in there to steal something. It's like you'll see signs in some places that say you're being, smiling, you're on camera. You're thinking to yourself, do I really want to steal that if the camera's on me?
Okay.
Things like that. It's a deterrent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment, please.
Hi, Billy K. Gavin Tigert. I live in the county. I own a business in downtown Crescent City. And while your statistics may show something different, which we were not provided with that, so I haven't seen that and I know it might be on the agenda, um, in the packet, there is a problem downtown. Cheryl and I have talked to several businesses and we are taking this grassroots approach because it's the right thing to do. It's a time for us to come together. There's been so much discord. This is an opportunity for us to all partner together and to not have somebody go do something crazy, which there's talk of people ready to do. We want to partner with the city. We want to partner with police force. We want to do the right thing. We want a safe environment downtown. I just invested in a building. I don't want it graffitied. I don't want it broken into. I just spent a fortune on surveillance. But yes, there's a camera. When you walk in, you see that you're on camera so that things aren't walking out because they do. I took some pictures, which I didn't get a chance to email you all, but I will later tonight. In the proposed areas that we've requested the signs to go up, there's no sign clutter. In fact, in many places, there's no parking signs. The one parking sign that we do want one of them on the poles is not being taken care of by the city. So, when we propose to maintain them, they will be maintained. If they need a good washing, we'll be prepared to sign whatever agreement you need. Graffiti, I know that there's chemicals out there to do that. We would pay to have them installed, as Cheryl mentioned, and it's a good plan. And I hope that you guys will move forward with this. One of the things I don't think Cheryl said is that the blue sign, which is a little warmer and fuzzier, when the wayfinding sign program is in place and ready to go, which it's not, there's no funding. When we did ask a question on how much the signs would cost, there was no answer. We still haven't gotten an answer back. We would engage that conversation on the outskirts of the district to, you know, have that be more warm and friendly. But these are not to detour tourists or customers. These are to detour the people who are harming us, harming our business and our way of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, other public comment? Okay, seeing that, we'll bring this back to the city council. I will say that I, I'm, I'm most impressed with your efforts and I think it's a great grassroots movement and, and it's all good. I have some trepidation about the nature of the sign. It doesn't seem welcoming and I, and I don't know if you'll lose business as a result. Only you could probably assess that better than I. But that's, that's, that's my concern anyway. I, I wonder about the, the design, but I think the idea is great. So...
I would say I feel the same way. I think the sign is discouraging and negative, but we want to discourage those that are, are, uh, breaking into our downtown businesses. So, it's kind of a, you know, uh, I guess we'll just, you know, we'll, we'll figure it out along the way. But again, getting together and working together is what we've all been wanting for a very long time and so I'm very happy to hear that.
I, I too agree with that. I was gonna ask Mr. Taylor though, this usually goes to the architectural review committee for design signs, right? Isn't that the next step that we usually do? If we approve the concept of putting up the, of the signs?
You'd be approving the use of city property, correct? And unfortunately, it's kind of an odd request. I mean, when I'm in there, zoning code just addresses these types of signs. So, I, yes, probably would have to come sometime.
Do we have a, a code that covers neighborhood watch signs?
We do not.
They're actually, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the difference here is they're asking to put them on public property. They're not going on their private property. They're going to public property. So, that's the difference.
Right, okay.
So, we'd be approving an exemption for putting them up on public property? Is that it?
Well, I think neighborhood watch signs are, are exempt. They could go on poles if the neighborhood. When I, when I was instructing the people of neighborhood watch in the Barisa tract, they had one time, we're gonna buy the signs and the city was gonna put them up on poles, on, on light poles. It never went all that way. They'd never reached the council.
All right, this'll be clear. There's nothing in our sign code that says they're exempt. This specifically says neighborhood watch signs are exempt signs. There's nothing that addresses neighborhood watch signs in our zoning code.
Can you say that again? I felt like you contradicted yourself. Because I, so I think, I don't think I heard you right.
There's nothing that specifically says neighborhood watch signs are exempt in our sign code.
Okay.
I didn't make that statement. So, there's nothing that, there's really nothing that addresses neighborhood watch signs.
Okay.
Certain signs are exempt, like, you know, city public parking signs and, and no trespassing signs, those types of things. But there's nothing that addresses neighborhood watch signs. Obviously, zoning codes can't address every, everything and we have a lot of catch-up to do with our codes.
Yeah, we do.
And Mayor, in the motion tonight, you know, the three items that we laid out, you know, to the city council, you know, what staff is saying that, you know, the council can just make the decision, direct staff, you know, to work with, you know, the downtown business district and install those signs. We do recommend coming back with some sort of maintenance agreement if you want to, you know, bypass the architectural review, you know, commission. You know, again, our code is kind of void of this, so that's why we're here first to, to talk to the council about, you know, do you want to allow these signs on the public's property? And then if you want to just direct staff, either way, we'll go to commission or we'll work directly with the bid to utilize these signs.
Thank you. I don't want to, okay, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, why didn't this go to the planning commission instead of us?
You know, it's kind of the, you know, who comes first? You know, at this point, it's the use of public property. So, we decided to come to the council first to see if we, you know, can utilize the public's property to, you know, install these signs. You know, in working, and again, it's void within our code. You know, if the council so desires, we can either go back to the commission or we can just, you know, take your direction tonight and move forward.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I have to ask you, Eric, I, I don't know what the architectural review committee does. Are you, do you deal with the? Are you, do you deal with the design or just the structure? I mean, what is it that they look at?
It would be both, but in this case, we already know what the structure's going to be, right? It's these 11 by 17 metal signs. And we know where they're going to be placed on probably city public, you know, parking poles or light poles. So it'd really be, the design would be the biggest thing we'd be looking at. And typically at Architectural Review, we'd maybe look at a couple of different examples. You know, one obviously would be the sign that they'd like to have, maybe some alternatives, maybe some combinations of different things. And so it's really up to that review committee to, to decide what they...
And, and the committee's recommendation would come back to the city council again?
Well, you, they could just approve it there and that that would be the type of sign. If you guys want to approve the use of the property, saying yes, we're okay with the, you know, placing signage there and then putting it in our property. And we could also just make a recommendation to come and bring it back to the council as well. They could recommend the type of sign and then come back to the...
Didn't direct the Architectural Review approve our new street signs?
Well, that was correct. I mean, that's where that kind of branding came from for that, the design. I think you all recall that, it came before the council.
And also the trash cans?
Correct, the trash cans, also our bus shelters, that's another one, that's another example. So it's really, it's the communities, overall, looking at the community design, right? And that's where you're looking at the aesthetics of the community.
And Mayor, typically those designs don't come back to the council. It's a decision by the commission unless appealed to the council.
Okay, very good. Okay, I think we've talked about this. Is anyone ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Yes, Mr. Ne.
I'd go with motion number one, to move to approve the installation of signage at the requested location and have the Architectural Review Committee approve the final design and direct staff to come back to the council with the signed maintenance agreement.
Okay, it's been moved that, to approve the installation of the signs to utilize the Architectural Review Committee and come back with a signed maintenance agreement. Any second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, very good. It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion?
I have a question. If, if this motion passes, what is the timeline we're looking at for Architectural Review to, to work with bid?
Well, it's always, we meet always the second Thursday of the month. So unfortunately, our next meeting's going to be this Thursday. So I don't have time to get on that one. That being said, it'd go in November or if this was a huge rush, you know, we can always have, sometimes we do have special meetings. I don't know if it warrants that, but...
We couldn't get it on for this Thursday?
No, today was the last day to get the agenda out, to meet that three days. The agenda went out last Friday.
Okay, other discussion?
We could have a special meeting though, right?
Correct.
Okay, it's, the motions before us has been moved and seconded. Would you please pull the vote, Kimmy?
Councilmember Anea?
Yes.
Councilmember Schlong?
No.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Holly?
Yes.
And Mayor, I'd, I'd like to ask the, Mr. Taylor to have a meeting before the next November meeting. If you can put together a special meeting for that, Dex, but I...
Okay, thank you. We hope that can happen. Okay, again, thank you ladies for your, for your hard work on that. Okay, so... Moving along, there's, there's simply, number 12, simply an announcement of my change. Welcome back, Mr. Gastinot. Let the record show, Mr. Gastinot is, is back. Announcement of, of change of appointment to the Local Agency Formation Commission and to appoint Councilmember Anea to the commission, who, Mr. Anea was the alternate. But given Mr. Gastinot's work responsibilities, he, he's unable to fulfill that role, at least through the end of the year. So Mr. Anea will do it. Again, Councilmember Murray will continue on it. And I'm willing to be the alternate to make sure that we have a quorum at each meeting. So I don't know if there's any heartburn over this, but...
Well, my only other thought would be Mr. Gastinot will bring his class every month.
Oh, we could do that. Fill the place up. Okay, so there's no, I don't think there's any action necessary. But we'll go ahead and move on then. Legislative matters, city council items. Anything in legislation, Mr. Palazzo?
Yeah, the end of the session, you know, happened here. And bills were on the governor's desk and I think the council received, you know, some emails from chair rounds on, you know, the bills that are being supported and signed, you know, by the governor and the ones that are, you know, he's not signing. So just kind of be aware of all that. And then also, you received, you know, some information on the league's position on, for the, I guess, ballot measures that are on the ballot in this coming November. So that's out as well. If you haven't received that, let me know, I'll make sure you get a copy of, a copy of those as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other legislative matters from the council?
I would just remind everybody that October 25th is our Redwood Empire Division fundraiser in Fortuna. It's a bocce ball tournament.
I didn't realize we settled on a date.
Yeah, Sarah sent the information out about two weeks ago.
I missed that one.
Yeah, I think it's the 25th. And so they need RSVPs quickly.
Okay, thank you. So city manager report and city council directives, any, anything you need to report? Anything for the, for the city manager?
I had a, I had a couple things. The WeTip line, have we promoted that at all yet?
Not at this time. We just, you know, adopted that this last week, so we're trying to get that put together and implement that through the police department.
Okay, I just...
Once we do, we'll do...
There were a lot of things going on on Facebook about, a lot of vandalism happening, like at the high school.
Oh.
And so I was trying to tell them to call about the WeTip information, but I couldn't remember the phone number. So I thought, oh, we haven't really marketed it, but...
Yeah, we haven't really marketed it, so we'll...
Well, that other number's still working, right?
The other number is still active, absolutely.
And then I was just going to ask, at our last meeting, we had some confusion on one of the motions and you, I thought you were going to look at it and bring it back to us?
We are, and that will be on the next meeting.
Okay. And then the last thing I was just going to ask, if at the next meeting you were to do a presentation on Measure C to educate the viewers and, about Measure C before the election.
That's a good idea.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah. And that was it for me.
Okay, very good. Anything else under city manager report and directive? Okay, very good. So we'll move on to our own reports. Mr. Anea, would you like to start us out?
I have a few things this time, since it's been three weeks. Let me go in no particular order. Went to the Habitat Dinner Saturday night, it was very well attended, and they did very well. I went to the Daughters of Ameri- of the American Revolution luncheon last Sa- about a week ago Saturday. And that was also well attended. I wasn't able to go to the, to the morning dedication of Mayor Holly did. But you know, one of the things that I've learned, and I've learned here, lived here a long time, is that almost all of Jedediah State Park is part of that memorial group.
A lot of it.
I didn't know that. Also, I went to the Harbor District, I don't know if we'll call that a rededication, but near completion ceremony that same day. Attended the LAFCO meeting. We also, I had also went to a pop meeting, Promenade Pool. Redwood Coast Transit Authority meeting. And also a chamber mixer at the Redwood Park, where I had my final glimpse of a few trees that are there in the wall.
Okay.
Yeah, what happened to them?
For now.
I came home and they're all cut down.
Federal property.
Yeah, I don't know. We need to get those signs up quickly, I guess.
That's it, that's it for me.
That's why I voted no. I thought we should just go right to getting those signs put up.
Okay, Kelly, would you like to tell us what you, didn't do it?
Sure. I, I attended some of the same things. The Harbor Promenade Celebration was very nice. And Mike McGuire and Jim Wood both attended, which was nice to see them here in our community. And the Redwood National Park Chamber Mixer as well. And Chamber Board Meetings and Chamber Sea Cruise Meetings. And just wanted to remind everybody that Sea Cruise is this weekend. And so we'll have lots of fun, friendly tourists in town and cool cars. And Show and Shine is on Friday night. And of course, the car show all day Saturday with the dance Saturday night. So I hope everybody has a great time. I will be in Oklahoma.
Oh, interesting, okay. Thank you.
For what?
Okay.
I know, I'm in a mix it. I'm like, we'll see how good I delegated, because I'm the co-chair of the event and I won't be here for it. I told somebody this morning at the last meeting, I said, if everything goes well, I was the co-chair. And I delegated well. If not, then I was in Oklahoma.
Good strategy.
Thank you.
Councilmember Murray?
Let's see, we had the RDA Oversight Committee since we last met and deferred any decisions on that to our next meeting. So nothing exciting there. And then we had, well, we had Mike McGuire and Jim Wood here. We had a coffee social and then the Harbor Promenade Dedication, which I think was quite a nice event. And then they gave the awards for the artists on all those stored anchors, which I thought was quite a fun and creative idea on what to do with the extra anchors. So that was pretty, pretty cool. And we have a lot of great local artists, so that was nice. And then I attended the School Candidates Debate and there was a huge turnout for that. So was it True Del Norte, is that what they're calling?
True North.
True North. They did a great job with all the youth, getting a lot of people to turn out for that. And it was a really good candidates forum. The next day, we had the Airport Bakra Meeting and we also had a dinner and we were celebrating the, finally, the beginning of doing the runway safety area. So that was finally getting to do, starting off on that. So we're, we're cheering on all, all the people that were responsible for getting all that to happen. We also brought on our new airport director, Matt Leitner. And so hopefully you'll be seeing him around town and getting to meet him. But that was a huge celebration. And now we're pushing for, when are we going to get to start the terminal? And we also had the Harrington House Chamber Mixer that night. So that was a really great event. And then, and then I also participated in the Del Norte Solid Waste, Hazardous Waste Recycling. And I guess that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gastinot?
I too attended the Redwood Coast Transit meeting with Mr. Anea. Also, we had a emergency Visitors Bureau meeting, talk about funding for the Film Commission, which we did reinstate at least 5,000 for it. They wanted to take it all down to zero, but we convinced them that it was a good investment into our future. I didn't make it to the promenade christening at the harbor, but this Sunday, me and my wife took the walk from Battery Point all the way down to the harbor on the whole trail. And it was a very nice experience and we saw people out biking. And well, of course, this weather is, you know, we're here in Southern California here. This weather's so great. And then we had a nice brunch at the char room, but the, the harbor looks fabulous. And, and if you haven't seen the chalk art yet, it's still down there. It has not rained, so it's still there and you can see everything from the kids. And I did also take advantage of the solid waste, hazardous waste cleanup. As I've been cleaning out my mother's house, which is unfortunate, but something you have to do. Other than that, my schedule's been very hectic and so I missed a lot of stuff. But things are starting to come down and classes are coming together and hopefully it gets better. It will get better.
Congratulations, by the way. I mean, to become a teacher at this stage in your life is a big accomplishment, so...
It's the scariest job in the world. The bells keep ringing, the kids keep coming.
I'm just very proud of you.
Thank you.
Remember, you just have to keep one lesson ahead of the kids, okay? Okay, thank you. Mr. Gastinot, okay. I'd like to start out by just saying that I want to apologize to one of our council members because I've been remiss in not acknowledging her hard work. Catherine Murray has been the, the president of the Redwood Empire Division of the League of Cities. And that, that is a big job. And she has done a lot of work out of town that sometimes doesn't get acknowledged. There've been several very successful meetings throughout our region. And we have the marijuana resolution that's gone forward under her leadership. And it just, I think there was a lot of good information shared. And actually, our small division is kind of a mover and shaker in the league now. And I appreciate all your work. Thank you. I had an opportunity to participate in the police chief interviews on September 18th. There'll be more about that later. The senior center meeting on the 24th, the big, the big, and I was thinking about this actually, during the CDBG discussion, they're reeling from the fact that they're not going to get CDBG this next year. So it makes about $125,000 difference to that small nonprofit. So that, that's, that's, those are the adjustments some organizations have to make when that occurs. So we're, we're dealing with that. I too went to coffee with, with Mike McGuire and Jim Wood. And it was a great opportunity to talk to two people that may very well be our legislators over the, over the next few years. And they were very responsive, I thought, to everything that, that we had, that we talked about. On the 27th, I did, was able to go to the Veterans Memorial Dedication at, at the Jedediah Smith Park. And that was, it's, it's, the setting is, is just unparalleled, you know? And, and it was, it was a great time for, it was a great feel-good moment and it was a nice ceremony and, and a setting that is, is just gorgeous. So I encourage everybody that goes to Jed Smith, you'll see the memorial if you just go to that main parking area. It's, it's right there and you can't miss it. So, so they actually had a gentleman from World War II that was introduced. And he won the, I think, the Medal of Valor for jumping on a grenade. And it was just, it was, it was a most impressive turnout. So I appreciated being a part of that. I was able to go to the Promenade Dedication, that was, I think, that same day. And, and that was good. And most recently, on the 2nd, Mr. Taylor and Mr. Palazzo and I went to the Coastal Conservancy meeting in Ferndale. And that, that was a really good experience. I was impressed. I didn't know Doug Bosco was the, the, the chairperson of that committee. But there are a lot, they were very receptive. And I think some of us had written out things to say and, and in support of our grant. And our grant having to do with the east side of Howl Park and, and beach access. And we were all prepared for an argument and they approved it before we could open our mouths. So that, that worked out, this probably was good. So I appreciate staff's hard work on that and that will be forthcoming in the near future. So congratulations, we're talking about $125,000. And so it was worth a trip to Ferndale. And interestingly, on the way back, we stopped by some businesses and talked to some businesses about possible opportunities in Crescent City on the way through. And I think, hopefully, we can all do that as council people. If you see a business that would be a good fit in Crescent City, it sure doesn't hurt to get a card and find out who it is that does that work. So that's all I had today. We are not going to adjourn the meeting because of the technical matter, we're going to be going back into closed session. But we don't anticipate any action coming out of closed session. So if you're here to, to listen and, and learn about any action, you'll probably be disappointed. So you're welcome to stay right there. But we are going to closed session and we'll adjourn thereafter. Okay, thank you all for coming.